Okay, I have 7:20 if everyone will take their seats. All ashore that's going ashore. Okay, like to call this work session to order. Purpose of this is to go over our agenda for next Monday night's meeting and to discuss any thing on there. Commissioner Noller have you down for invocation? You okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Horst pledge please, thank you. We'll do a roll call, we'll do it by the electronic. So we have a record of it. Approval of the minutes, minutes October 25th meeting have been distributed. Were there any corrections, deletions, or additions to them that anybody noticed? If so, we'll try to correct them before next Monday night. If not, we'll present them to you as they are here, certainly there again. If you do notice something, please let us know so we can correct it, so we can have corrected copies to be voted on Monday night. Announcements, we'll go over any announcements we have, certainly if there's anything that any of the commissioners would like to make an announcement of, we'll welcome you to do that at that time. And myself and the mayor also, if we have anything that needs to be, to let you know about, mayors anything tonight under announcements you need to cover?
There is just one thing I want to speak about, and it just really came to our attention here a couple of days ago, and it's on the streetscape. T-Dot is saying they have overpaid us on some items, and so we're trying to get that determined as to if that is true, and if so, what that amount is. Right now Reagan Smith is saying that they think that calculation is incorrect, so we're trying to work with T-Dot, they have some new people in those positions, so we're trying to work with T-Dot to determine whether or not that's true. So I just want to go ahead and let you know that's something that may be coming up in January, we don't have anything more, I wish I could tell you more, but right now, we just had a meeting which T-Dot was supposed to attend online, and then no representative from T-Dot attended, so we're not really sure where we stand on that.
Were we, we were under the assumption everything had been closed out on it, are there, have there been any additional invoices on it or anything from Reagan Smith?
There have been some invoices coming in, the construction, everything was closed out, this is actually in an attempt to close out the contract itself and get that off our system, off T-Dot's system, and it came right down to the very end, they've got some new T-Dot staff, and they're saying that they've overpaid us on something, and we're trying to determine whether or not that's true, and if so, what is that amount we're going to have to repay?
Do you know roughly how much that was that they're saying that they overpaid?
I believe the number T-Dot used was around $63,000. Reagan Smith says they don't think that's correct because of their, some of their unit prices came down in that period of time, so they don't think it is that amount, they think it's something lower, and it's all tied to the budget amendment we did last year to repave Main Street, because that was not going to be part of it originally, and somehow T-Dot is saying they reimbursed us to pave Main Street even though that was not supposed to be part of it, that was my understanding, that was Reagan Smith's understanding, that was the T-Dot staff at the time's understanding, however, now we're getting told that they did, and we're trying to determine if that actually happened, and if so, what's the amount that they overpaid us?
How much are we likely going to have to pay Reagan Smith to fight this $63,000?
The last invoice they sent to us was, was it $23,000 Amy, and that was a combination, I think, of different invoices, and there is also another item that may come out of that, the contractor is disputing some of the quantity calculations and is claiming that they've been underpaid, however Reagan Smith says that they are double billing and that they do not hold that amount of money. If the contractor determines they want to push it, we could be looking at legal action sometime in the future, however, that is all part of determining what's going on with this project, it's, something got messed up somewhere, and we're trying to determine where that mistake was made, or if there is a mistake, who made it, and how do we need to rectify it?
Thank you, Mayor, welcome to the wonderful world of grants.
I will say it has been determined that no mistake was made on our part, it was all somewhere else, so that has been verified by multiple sources that we did not make a mistake.
I affectionately refer to this as never-ending grant, but that's, we'll move on. We'll first approve the agenda, then we'll ask the citizens that want to speak to the agenda to please sign in. We do have on your agenda this month, Dr. Satterfield's quarterly schools report, he was unable to put that together last month, he will be prepared to give us that this month. And we'll go into the, of course, the mayor's report, anything else you need to tell us about the nightmare?
There is going to be the community Thanksgiving at the high school, Eleanor Ford Theater on November 23rd, I believe that starts at four o'clock and goes to seven or eight, so anybody from the public's welcome to attend, and that's being put on by the Chamber of Commerce. If you would like to volunteer or donate some money, please see Ms. Natalie Knutson.
That's next Tuesday night on the 23rd, Thanksgiving dinner, anyone that'd like to come, come and get your belly full. Good time to be had by all. Committee reports, the ones that we have, steering committee met November 9th, solid waste November 4th, emergency services November 4th, purchasing November 15th, budget and financing November 15th, building committee will meet the 16th, and economic development will meet the 16th, that's tomorrow night. We have personnel committee scheduled for the 19th, is that Thursday night? Yeah, 18th, I don't, 19th doesn't sound right. Yeah, 18th, it should be the 18th. Okay, were there any other reports, any other committees that have met? I think we do have a few that are scheduled for the first week of December, because there were so many in November, we had to push a couple of them off, mainly for reorganization. One that will be, then will be education, I will be looking at some of these proposed changes to BEP, it will be a joint meeting with the school board, the school board and Dr. Satterfield will be here for the education meeting, it's kind of a, kind of an informal joint meeting on this, so that we can hash out what's likely coming our way on this. Active business appointments, there's a few adjustments to the committee structure, I will finalize that and get that to everybody next Monday night. Resolutions, first one is 2021-31-735, charter amendment, that's the one that we took up last month, we have to pass this three consecutive readings by two-thirds vote for it to be placed on the ballot for the public to decide. Any questions on that one? Next one is resolution 2021-35-739, this is some vehicles that we're wanting to surplus, to be able to dispose of and to sell, you see in the resolution, the, what they are and how we plan to dispose of them, some will be sold on govdeals.com, and some will just be sold for scrap. Any questions on those? Next, we have resolution 2021-36-740, this is a resolution much like the other one, but this one is coming from the highway department. Have we received a list of those things yet, Amy?
We have not, they will be discussing that tomorrow at the highway commission meeting.
That's, okay, so we will have that, we'll know exactly what those, those items will be, they don't meet till tomorrow, okay. Next is resolution 2021-37-741, this is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement, or the county to enter into an agreement on the opioid settlement that's being proposed by the states, this is in some ways much like the tobacco settlement, but it's structured entirely different. Mayor, can you enlighten us more than that?
Yes, sir, this is going to settlement through various, with various drug manufacturers or distributors, this was many different states involved in this and local governments. What this is, if you join this settlement, and they get enough local governments in the state of Tennessee to join this, we'll actually get a bigger slice of the settlement pie going forward, that could be more than $613 million over 18 years coming to the state of Tennessee, of that, 92 million would be coming directly to counties and municipalities from what's called a subdivision fund, so the counties and cities would get 35% of those funds right off the top, or next, another 70% will go what's into what's called an abatement fund, it has to be used for programs or anything like that to reduce opioid use in your communities, of that 70%, 35% will also go to counties and cities for programs that they create, and then the remaining 15% goes in the state's general fund. They do need to know, any local government's going to join this has to do so by January 2nd, 2022, that is the, the end date, and that's when the calculation be made if we've hit that number of local governments joining to get that additional fund, so that's what this resolution is, is to agree to this, this settlement and get those additional funds if we can get a number of local governments on board.
Any questions on that one? Next, we have resolution 2021-38-742, this is a resolution authorizing a continuous five-year reappraisal cycle, currently we're on a six-year appraisal cycle, what this does, sometimes it would trigger if the state thinks that we've had extraordinary growth, a three-year reappraisal cycle in between. That, when we do that, there is expense to the, to the county to pay for doing that appraisal cycle, so what Mr. Potts has recommended that we do is to change it from a six-year to a five-year cycle, and that will eliminate the possibility of having that third-year reevaluation in the center, which should save the mon, save the county some money, it's nominal expense, probably a little bit more work on his office because he's having to go through this, some ways more often, in other ways not as often, depending on whether you count that typical three-year as one of those cycles. He had brought this forward to the, to the steering committee, felt like it did not need to go to any specific committee, so we're bringing it to, to the full body for your consideration, based on his recommendation. Any questions on it, I'll try to answer them, I thought he was going to be here tonight, he's not, I'm sure he'll be here next Monday night if we have more specific questions. Okay, okay. I think we covered it pretty well, any, any, any specific questions on? Saying none, we'll move on. Next one is resolution 2021-39-743, this is a resolution to establish a veteran service committee, this is a temporary study committee in nature, to look at our needs for a veteran service office, the thing that we are specifically asking them to do is to get us some statistics together as far as veterans to be served, things that, services that are available to them, things that are needed for them to recommend to us, to give us any budgetary information that would, would help us with this. It is to be a temporary committee, they're charged with these, once they come back with a report to us, then we would take that under advisement. That's the, we've had a lot of questions about it, a lot of questions from the public, what's happening with this audit, this office, and why, you know, why is it going unmanned, and this, that, and the other, the mayors worked very hard to put together an MOU with, with Sumner County to kind of bridge the gap until we kind of have time to really study this issue, so that's the purpose of this committee. Any questions about this? Mr. Gully?
I do believe I remember during steering committee that this also included, possibly our commission had about three members that were veterans, is that correct?
Yes, sir, my, I think the steering committee recommended five, and the mayor had recommended that the commander of the VFW and American Legion also be a part of this. My intentions right now is, I've asked and everyone's agreed, to serve would be Commissioner Walsh, Commissioner Russell, Commissioner Davis, and also two members from the community at large, Dr. Bill Painter and Dave Trainey, who are both veterans and are familiar with the needs of veterans, and then the two commanders of the two posts, that would be, that would be my intentions of who I would bring forward if this, if this is approved at this point.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry, I was going to say the same thing, Ms. Russell, is I talked to Mr. Chambers, the VFW post commander, he's experiencing some health issues, he's not going to be able to do so, so I would just say, reach out to him and see if he would recommend anyone from VFW.
Yeah, I, I was aware of that, and I was going to make it by, that would be not him specifically, but ex officio by office or by that title, and certainly if there's an assistant commander or someone that he wanted to stand in his stead, we would, we would take care of it in that way. Ms. Russell, did you have something else? Okay. Yes, Ms. Baker?
Has anyone reached out to these people and just asked for their opinion instead of forming a committee, asking if anybody would be interested in the position? I just, it seems a little confusing to me, is why we're going to establish a committee to study, you know, when I sat down tonight, I had a handout in front of me that had, has outline of who she had served and the amount of veterans, and I'm a little confused as to why we want to form a committee when we could just ask those members of the committee for the information?
I don't, I don't understand your question, you asked several things, I can't.
Yeah, I just, has anyone asked any of these people if, about the position, the availability of the position, I mean, the position's been vacant for a while, and I don't understand why we're just now forming, wanting to form a committee, why have we not reached out to some of these people and said, do you know anybody interested in serving in this position?
I guess the only thing I could answer to that is I've been remiss not doing it until now, this was planned, I actually talked to them last week at the state veterans committee to see what their suggestions would be, and they suggested that we form a committee and look at what our actual needs were before we, you know, made a decision as to what direction we wanted to go on this. So even before I even knew that there was an MOU worked out between us and Sumner County, I had already planned to put this committee together, or committee to look at it to, to give us some, some input, and as far as the, the people serving, just trying to get veterans and people that were familiar with the needs of veterans to, to assess what the overall need would be, certainly whatever they come up with is, is only a recommendation to the full body, it's just to try to gather some information, factual information for us to know what directions in the best interest of our community.
I understand, but don't we have that information before us tonight? The former veteran services officer, she's provided information.
Well, I think that was laid on the desk tonight, yes ma'am, I saw it, I haven't really had time to look at it, did you have it before tonight?
No.
I didn't either, so to answer that question, no, this committee was to be formed to get that type of information and other information, anything that it sees that is necessary, of course that is a good start for them, and would be good information for them, I'm sure. We don't have to do this, if you want to do this, if you think it's a good idea, and I did this based on contacts I've had with the public, people questioning it, wanting us to look into it, why haven't we done something, and we're trying to, that's what this is, this, there's no ulterior motive on this other than to look at this issue and to try to have some recommendations from the veterans in our community, is what they feel like is needed in the way of services.
I would say Commissioner Baker, I put those on the desk tonight, I drafted that document, that's a timeline of my efforts involving the VSO position, so that's what I had done, now it does have information in there from emails from Ms. Russell, that, that was information in there, because the steering committee asked about number of veterans served and whatnot, and so there is some information in there about what she was doing at that time to serve veterans, and the last page of that is a document that was given to me by the state department of veterans affairs, when myself, the VFW commander, the American Legion commander, and another American Legion member met with the assistant, assistant commissioner from the state department of veterans affairs and the Sumner County VSO director at the VFW hall here across the street, so I mainly provided that to answer some questions that were asked at the steering committee regarding the MOU that I was submitted with Sumner County's VSO.
Any other questions? Mr. Dickey?
How many veterans we have in this county?
Well, that's, the information that the mayor provided us tonight has a figure on it, the, the figure that I had obtained from two different sources was different from this, one lower, one higher, so that's what I want this committee to look at, is to try to gather this information and get us the valid factual information. I have no reason to doubt that what the mayor provided us is not correct, it's just that it's not the same, same number as what has been indicated at times in the past, but simply this is a resolution to form this committee, if you think it's a good idea, vote for it, if you think it's a bad idea, vote against it, it's that, it, I don't know what more we need to say about it, if you have specific questions, I'll be glad to talk to anybody about it. This is something that's, one of those things that's been on the back burner, and you're going through budgeting times, and you're going through everything else, that it, it did get kind of pushed to the back burner, so to speak, and just trying to move it forward. Anything else on it, Mr. Gully?
Just my way of commenting, I will be absent next week, but my vote would be a yes on this, just stating where I would be, myself, and where I would want to be on this, I'll be absent next week, can't vote that yes here, but that's where my place would be on this vote.
Thank you. All right, anything else on it? Mr. Davis?
I'm just going to say I don't see a problem with doing it either, just to speak up and being a veteran, I don't know.
My concern is just the time it's going to take to form a committee, get all the data, you know, the time it's going to take, I don't understand why one can't offer services now, instead of waiting.
We, we don't have one, and we've been without, and we've been trying to address it, the mayor's been trying to address it, and we're not sure that what he's worked out is going to be a permanent solution, it might be a good stopgap solution, and it may be a good permanent solution, but we were just wanting to look at this issue because it is one of those things that felt like it needed to be addressed, and that this was the best way to address it, and that's.
Am I correct in saying that it says in here that you're going to pick this committee, and they're going to be paid, and how much are they going to be paid?
What typical committee pay is?
Typical committee, and you're going to appoint the members to this committee? You yourself, the commission chairman?
The rules of the, of the commission say that the chairmans appoints the committees, yes, that's why it says that.
Those are rules of procedure of the county commission passed on February 24th, correct?
Yes, it does say that the commission has, you know, temporary, permanent committees, standing committees, and temporary committees from time to time, as named necessary by the commission or the chairman for a specific task, and that's what this is, is just, this is not to be a permanent committee, this is just a temporary, temporary committee.
Chairman, I'd like to mention something too, I think when we had this discussion in steering, I think one of the takeaways that we may end up with, and I hope does happen, is that through the outreach of the committee, as it reaches out to people in our community, that there's a higher community awareness that will take place of the services that we're trying to provide for all the veterans that are here in the county, and by keeping this local and keeping the focus local, we may end up with two options, and both are good, one may be better than the other, but as we talked about this steering committee, I, Mr. Gully alluded to this, he was the gentleman that made the motion to do this, and I seconded it, and I still approve of it, I think that we ought to reach out to our community, and that's what this committee is charged to do, and hopefully there might be some, some veterans that weren't, that are here that weren't aware of where to go or what to do, that may, as a end result, benefit by this.
Anything else? Okay, we'll move on into ordinances. First one is ordinance 226-2021-17, this is second reading, and we'll open it first for a public hearing, this is to repeal Title 18 on the water and sewers code, and they will be replacing it with rules, this is part of where we're trying to look at the old Hartsfall code, and the things that are applicable and are not applicable anymore and need to be changed to what we're trying to, to deal with, we will have a public hearing, and this is a second reading on this. Any further questions on this one? Mr. Gully?
Mr. July, I had asked in the past there, and I haven't got a chance to read through Title 18 as much as I probably should, but in gist, what will this do, what will this grant to the water department or take away from the water department at this point?
When you passed the ordinance in February 2020, you gave the water board the authority to make all rules and regulations of the water department, the Title 18 existed under the town of Hartsfall, so it, it did not change after it went metro, and in that time you had the water department actually went out as a water utility, then came back under the county, and you've changed the board twice, so none of those changes are reflected in Title 18, so you have rules and regulations that have been passed by the water board that conflict with the language in Title 18, but you have something passed 20, you know, 19 years after we went metro saying the water board has the power to create all rules and regulations, what you're going to do with this, if you take and basically repeal Title 18 and say, let the water department do it, the water department's going to adopt a lot of the provisions of Title 18, and adopt that to kind of what their current language is, and pretty much adopt Title 18 into their rules and regulations.
Can I answer your question? Not entirely. I, I don't know that we can go into every aspect of it tonight, but certainly try to answer your questions individually about it. It it's not going to be a change from what we're doing, it's going to be a change in the legalities of what's written that we're doing, we've got a contradiction in it, I guess would be, is that the simplest way to put it, Mayor?
You've got a lot of provisions in Title 18, still talk about town of Hartsfall, you've got water rates that are different than what the actual water rates are, and it just not has been updated with current practice, so there's a lot of provisions that conflict with the rules and regulations and other laws, so it's just to clean all that up, put it under the water department, which is what the county commission did in February 2020.
Any other questions, commissioners? Okay, next is ordinance, let's see, 2027-2021-18, they're correct? Losing my place. Yes, that's rezoning R1 to C2 on McMurray Boulevard in front of Hickory Ridge, this is a, there again, public hearing, and second reading on, on this proposed zoning change. Any questions on it tonight? Okay. Next is ordinance 228, 202119. There again, this is an ordinance to change zoning from A1 to R1 on some partials located upon Highway 141 North. This will be open public hearing and a second reading. You have all the documentation there in your pocket. If you have specific questions, I would refer them to Mr. Edwards. Next one would be rezoning ordinance 229, 202120. This is A1 to R1, a partial on Highway 10. There again, this is a public hearing and second reading of that ordinance. Any questions on it tonight? We have one ordinance, rezoning ordinance that is up for first reading. This is an ordinance to change two partials, I believe it is. One from R1 to C1 and one that's in the county from R1 to C2, or vice versa. I'm backwards. R1 to C1 for the county partial and R1 to C2 for the city part of the partial. This is on Dalton Hollow Road, almost immediately to the right off of Halltown Road. This was, this is being asked by the property owners. This was not recommended by the planning commission at their November 8th meeting. We will take up first, first reading on this Monday night. We have questions on it? Okay. And I think that's it on the ordinances. I'm sorry, Mr. Gully?
What was the reason for the non-recommendation? Did I miss it in here? It just says not recommended.
No, the planning commission, they discussed items like that Dalton Hollow is a narrow road, it's not a thoroughfare, mostly commercial property, it joins your major arterial roads in the county. And that was the basic reason.
Was, what, the vote, was it divided or pretty unanimous?
It was unanimous.
Any further questions on that one? Mr. Bockmaster, your recommend?
Out of curiosity, what's the zoning on the property across the street from it?
Where the hospital will be built, right there is C2. And this is what's going down the road. Narrow road, outside the seat. Like, uh, open the seat, right at the seat there. Where is the fact?
My understanding is the property across the road is commercial, is C2, but it has road, a lot of road frontage on Halltown Road and Highway 25, not just Dalton Hollow Road. And I, I think that was the rationale for trying to, for them requesting this go to commercial was that that area is becoming a commercial area. Mr. Walsh?
Is that where that old white mansion is behind McDonald's there?
It's the next road up, yes. Yeah. But yes, it's that general area, yes. Okay. All right. Any further questions on that one? If you, there again, if you need more specific information about it, please talk to Mr. Edwards or Mr. Knoller and Ms. Baker are, are two commissioners on the planning commission. They'd be glad to talk to you about it, I'm sure. And that moves us up to budget amendments. These were all presented the last hour. First one we have is BA 10116FB, Animal Shelter Director. This is a request by the mayor to increase the amount that we typically had budgeted for the Animal Shelter Director. He's having a hard time getting anyone willing to take that position for any less than $15 an hour. And this would make funds available to move it from an expected $12 an hour up to $15 an hour. The $5,859 fund balance draw to accomplish this. Mayor, did I cover that adequately?
Yes, sir.
Any questions on this one? Mr. Gully? Mr. Ford?
It was not recommended by budget and finance committee to do this.
It was not? Okay, that's right. This one failed. Thank you. Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. Did not mean to misrepresent it, just get them mixed up. Okay. This one was not recommended. It was a six to five, I believe. Okay. All right, but we will. Yes, sir.
If this don't pass Monday night, are we, where we staying for our animal, what we gonna do about the animal situation, Mayor?
I'll be leaving here tonight to go water and feed the dog. If you don't have no staff and nobody at the animal shelter, might as well close the door.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Ford. Next is BA 10118FB. This is a request to amend the 101 general budget. Per the administration of courts, the 2020 census data has moved us up one class in our judicial system. And therefore, the general sessions judge is entitled to a bit of an increase. And it is retroactive till April 1st last year. So this will be some monies that was accrued in the last budget, monies to date in this budget and monies going forward in this budget. The total to bring this up to where it needs to be is a fund balance draw of $54,752.74. We really don't have a lot of choice in this. We have to do this. It was recommended by budget and finance. Any questions on that one? You have the supporting documentation there, the letters from the administrator of the courts and what these required salaries are. Okay. Next one is BA 10119FB. This is, there again, a fund balance draw, $17,984. This is necessary to provide funding to the election commission for a May primary election. Both parties have requested, the county have a primary and the judicial races that are on the May ballot, or a May ballot for those races before they're placed on the August ballot. This was not anticipated, therefore it was not in the budget. And there again, this is one of those things that we have to do. Okay. Yes, sir, Mr. Paxton?
Can I say something?
Come up to the mic. Make it brief.
The, we're in the 15th Judicial District. Some of the counties in our district elected to have a primary. If our, if our local party leaders did not ask to have a primary, which they did, we would not be able to participate in that 15th Judicial District primary, which some of the other counties have called. If you recollect, in 2020, that's exactly what happened to us, is that some of the counties had called one, we had not. Therefore, when they had that primary, our voters were not allowed to participate in it because we hadn't called for a primary. So I believe that's why our local party asked for this primary. They also only called for it for the judicial. So those of you who are going to run in August, this doesn't change you at all. You'll still have the, the February through April timeframe to run your, your petitions. It will be only those running in the judicial race.
Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Pax. Anyone have a question, Mr. Paxton, on this one? Okay. We'll move on. BA 10117, Veteran Services. This is a budget amendment to fund a MOU, memorandum of understanding with Sumner County Veterans Services to come over and man our office two days a month. This is to cover funding for that so that we can get this office back open again. Any questions on this one?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to punt out, this is not a fund draw, this is just moving money from one line item to another, so it, it doesn't take any new money, it's just reallocating existing funds that have already been budgeted.
Thank you, Mayor. That's correct. The, this is already in the budget, but it, it just moves it from one, one line, line item to another so that it can be spent that way instead of for someone to be paid. Thank you for pointing that out, Mayor. Okay. Any questions on that one? Yes, or Mr. Davis?
Recommended, not recommended?
It was recommended. It was.
I have a question. I have one more question. Will this, the person that's providing the service, won't they be getting the same data that the proposed committee would be getting?
I don't know, will they?
Well, it says they're gonna do outreach in the MOU, if you'll read it, says one day they're gonna be doing outreach to veterans.
The, the thought of doing this was that they're gonna generate the data we can use. Originally the thought was they generate the data and we'd use it going in the next budget year to see if this is an office that need to be hired somebody from the county or if we need to do something different. So they should be doing outreach and then help us generate all those, that data from the systems they can access that we can't without a veteran service officer. So hopefully, this will generate a lot of data that we can use to make those decisions going forward.
Or we can simply wait on this until we get the recommendation back from the other committee, if we form the other committee. Or we can do both, or we can do neither. It's up to you to decide what you think the best course of action is. If you read the stated reasons in this memorandum about memorandum of understanding, it, it is basically to open the office back up two days of, two days a month. The question is, is that enough? And I don't know, I don't know whether it is or it isn't. It may be sufficient, but just think we wanted some, some input on it. I think everybody is wanting to take care of our veterans. I think that's our concern here, and that's why we're trying to ascertain what is best and exactly what is needed. Certainly, Ms. Baker, if you're, you think this is not a good idea, then like I said...
I didn't say that. I did not say that. I said, like I said, my, I think the veterans should get care. My concern is the time that it would take to commit, to form a committee, then the, for, for the committee to meet, get the data. I think the veterans should be getting service now.
Well, that's, that's why this MOU is needed now.
Exactly.
And I think that was put forth in budget and finance for it to be approved. Okay. Like I say, they go hand in hand, they can accomplish from different directions the same thing. Hopefully, they will agree. Mr. Walsh?
Right now, the veterans aren't being served. That's the purpose of this MOU. And then when we have the committee, we can get more data because at, in the MOU, it also states that the mayor can terminate the MOU with a 30-day written notice. So this right now is kind of a Band-Aid, so the veterans here can get help. I have personal friends that are veterans, and it's kind of going to Crossville for a veteran service officer. One day a week or one day a month's not gonna cut it for the veterans. Some of these veterans still work. You have David Chamber, who is the commander of the VFW, who can't get out as much. So this MOU is just going to be a Band-Aid so we can get something in place at least for our veterans, because if you go to other counties, you start getting the taxpayers of other counties complaining that they voted for their budget to pay for citizens of their county, not Trousedell County. I was a VFW commander here from 2012 to 2019. I'm currently Senior Vice Commander. It's an issue. It's a problem that we have to have these offices manned so these veterans can get help. I personally am healthy, knock on wood, I don't need it. But there are too many out here that need it, and we gotta get the help to them. And that's what that committee's gonna formalize, and then the mayor can extinguish this MOU and quit using other counties, if that's what we come up with during our study with this committee.
Well said, thank you. Anyone else? We'll move on. BA 10120, Archives Grants. This is where we received some funding and state grants for the archives. They are wanting to put this monies into office supplies and other equipment. It is to try to purchase microfiche equipment for the archives. Any questions on that one? Next is BA 10121G. This is Senior Center Funding. This is some Title III funding that comes in for, specifically for the senior center. And this is bringing that money in and putting it into the normal line items for it. Any questions on it? Okay. Next is BA 11801. This is EMS overtime. This, in the bonus that was paid out to make the bridge between going to the direct deposit, they were not paid their customary overtime, and this was money is necessary to be able to do that. And budget finance did send this one on to the full body. Any questions on that one? Okay. And I think that includes our budget amount, budget amendments and appropriations. We will have notaries. Does any other business come up? We will try to address it if we amend our agenda, and we'll have time for public comments at the end. Also, be sure you turn in your attendance sheet to, to Amy. Are there any other?
I have some other reasons.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'll try to be quick. I know everybody's ready to go home, but as we discussed tonight, this is the rules of procedure that the county commission passed back in February of 2000. This body passed it, a vote to 16 to four. In reviewing that, I have found some errors. These are just a few that I have found. There are others that I didn't want to address tonight, but the main thing is the committee assignments. You all know, I don't mean to sound like a... You all know, I don't mean to sound like a, a crybaby, that's not what this is about, let me say that upfront, that's not what this is about. But I just feel, if you'll look, I had emailed Chairman Jewell about being put back on the Employee Committee. He has, to date, he has still not responded to my email. However, Vice Chairman Ferguson did. And there's a copy, if you'll look on your second page, there's a copy of that email that Mr. Ferguson sent me. It says, in part, "You questioned Mr. Jewell about how many questions he was asking at one of our meetings, and later questioned me about our allowing questions in general. In my opinion, those comments were not consistent with how committees operate." So my question tonight is, if we ask questions, are we gonna be taken off of a committee? For asking questions, if the chairman and the vice chair don't agree with the questions we ask, they can just take us off a committee? I think we were all elected by citizens, and we owe it to them, we need to ask questions. We have a right to have our questions answered. And like I said, he said during the meeting that he would, he took our attendance, not our attendance, he did not say attendance. He said he took our surveys into account. As you can see, mine's attached, I put that I enjoyed serving on that committee, I put my attendance record. And like I said, the last page is just a list of some of the rules that aren't being followed. Like I said, there are plenty more. However, in these rules, there's no repercussions for if you don't follow them. So I'm just, I'm unclear exactly what's happening. And like I said, Chairman Jewell, if you'd like to address me now and tell me why you took me off the Personnel Committee, I'd love to know.
First of all, I had asked everyone if you had questions or things that, about the committee assignments to call me. I had, I had specifically on two occasions asked for phone calls, considering it. The other thing that I had asked on the survey, which I'm not required to do, trying to be fair to everyone, and trying to put people where, for the most part, they would like to be. And if, it's pretty, pretty clear, I think, in bold print, to rank your selections, one through four, one being your top priority, which you did not do. You did mention three, four committees at the bottom. I tried to assure everyone that I would put them on their, at least their top two choices. And I think we, for the most part, did do that. As to why you were taken off of that committee, number one, it was not in any way I knew your one or two top choices. You were on five, you asked to be added to solid waste, so I had to eliminate one. At the chairman's recommendation of that committee, when, went over it with him, he asked for you not to be put on that committee. Why I referred your email to him specifically, Mr. Ferguson, was so that he could explain his reasons for asking for you not to be put on that committee. I'm not sure if I've done something wrong, I will apologize. The only thing I think I did wrong was trying to look at a situation that had maybe gotten a little out of hand with the numbers of people, and the numbers, we've been constantly trying to trim this back. And it, it's hard to trim it back without eliminating some people from some things.
I'm sorry, but I've been on solid waste since two thousand eighteen.
I did not interrupt you when you were talking, how dare you interrupt me when I'm trying to explain to you? How dare you?
Don't talk to me like I'm a child.
I have bent over backwards to try to be respectful to you. And I'm trying to be respectful now, and answer your questions as honestly and as openly as I possibly can. But you have got to give me time to answer them. Whether you like my answer or not, you, you have to, you should, you don't have to do anything. Okay? I was trying to answer your questions as honestly as I possibly could. Now, you may not like that answer. You may not agree with that answer, and everybody sitting out there may not agree with that answer, but that's the answer I'm trying to give you. Okay? Why were you taken off this committee? Simply the chairman asked that you not be on that committee. I didn't have anybody else from the committee ask why you weren't on the committee. I thought we explained it relatively well, why? Why that we were having to take some people off some that they possibly wanted to stay on? And I think most people understood that. And if you feel slighted, I'm sorry. I, you know. Okay, I'm through.
So to be clear, when we have those, when you assign the committees for the upcoming year, you assume that the chairman is gonna be the same? And that's why you did it? There was no guarantee when, that Mr. Ferguson was gonna be re-elected chairman, was there? Or did you know that already?
No, ma'am, there is no guarantee of that. But I asked the chairman of the current committees that were chairman, what changes they thought needed to be made, and what they wanted. Most of them, most of them, you talked to me that night, you were out of town. Shake your head at me, you talked to me that night, and I ask you that. Did you have any changes that you wanted to make in your committee? And I tried to get up and touch with you. So anyway, that's it. I guess, you know, next year, you're probably gonna have a new chairman sitting up here, and y'all can, you know, maybe they won't even ask you what committees you want to be on, or try to. I spent a lot of time on this, not trying to make anybody mad, just trying to make the whole situation work better, save a little bit of money. Amy and I have spent hours trying to go over this, there were things that got overlooked, there's still changes to be made. But to answer your question, that's the why.
I have more questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Did every commissioner turn in their survey?
I think so, I'd have to go back and look. I've got them right here in my briefcase. There was one, one that I know emailed it in a little bit later. Were you aware of any that didn't? There were two, if, one we asked for them to be turned in by that hadn't. One we received by email, the other, Mr. Johnson was in an urgent home, whatever, and didn't. If there were more than that, I don't, I don't remember it. I can't make people do things, we ask them to, and
And your reason for not answering my email? My repeated emails?
My reason for answering was I felt like I asked you to call on more than one occasion, and most people did call. I don't type real well, so I don't like to answer by email. I like to talk to people. And I referred it to Mr. Ferguson, because he's the one that indicated that he did not want you on the committee anymore. Since it wasn't a top one or two picked by you, you did say you wanted to stay on all of them, plus an extra one. And I assure you, this was not an easy decision, and I knew that, you know, it's not, it's, it's never easy when you're trying to juggle this and cut things back. So I have no apologies to make. I hope I've answered your questions.
And Mr. Ferguson, his answer? The rea, the reason you did not want me on the Personnel Committee any longer is because I questioned you and Mr. Jewell, as you stated in your email, is that correct?
Yeah, I'll be happy to clear this up, Ms. Baker. In the committee that we first started, the night of the committee, we were first looking at the personnel policies. And Commissioner Jewell had quite a few questions as we were first starting out our meeting. And he was asking a lot of the questions. And then you questioned him in such a way that you were more chastising him than you were asking a question. You said, "How long have you had this in front of you? Why are you asking so many questions about this? Do you not, do you remember this?"
If you'll go back and watch that video, actually, before that meeting, the changes were brought to us, and the body requested that the changes be marked in black and then in red. And we had that for, I think, I believe it was three weeks. And his first question was, "Why are we changing this from employee policy to employee handbook?" Then the next question was, "The table of contents, are we changing this?" Because this, they were there in black and white in front of him. And I'm sorry, I just feel like, if you're on a committee, you should do the homework, you should review the material before the meeting. Therefore, when you get to the meeting, you're prepared to go ahead. And I didn't understand just the title. But I agree, so I stopped that night, you addressed that in that meeting, so I stopped, did I not? I said, "Let's proceed."
You did, and to go back to that other meeting, you questioned whether or not we could even have something that was live through. You said, "Haven't we all had this long enough? Why do we need things drawn through?" And it took Commissioner Davis to tell us that this is normal procedure to have changes, and then what were the changes from? Let's draw a line through them, so we waited a couple of weeks. It was simply something that was, in my opinion, inappropriate to be grilling him about questions. People should always be able to ask as many questions as they want, without another commissioner saying, "Why are you asking so many questions?" Then later in the meeting, Mr. Dickey, he looks at it, and I remember this very well. There was a policy about probationary period. Should it be six months, should it be ninety days? He just had a simple question. It was in black and white, then it was currently ninety days. And he said, "Hey, could this possibly be six months?" And I looked around the room, and the department heads, and I said, "Hey, is, how is ninety days working for you?" And they said it was working fine. And Mr. Dickey was satisfied with that question. And then you turn around and say, "We're not supposed to be asking questions about things that are already in place." You said, "We're only supposed to be asking questions about the changes." And to me, that's trying to tell the chairman who, what questions are allowable and what questions are not. It was a fair question that Mr. Dickey had. And so I said at that point, "Look, we've always done it this way, we can talk about changes that are taking place. We can talk about anything that exists in the policies. Everybody should be allowed to ask the question." And so, at that point, I was like, you know, this is becoming something where you're challenging people to even allow them to ask questions, what types of questions to ask. And as I told you in that email, and you got in front of everybody, I thought that was inappropriate. To be challenging those commissioners on questions that they felt were important to them. That's what this is about. So when Mr. Jewell had to limit it down to at least five people on committees, I said, "I prefer that you not be on it." I stand by that. You're gonna be on other committees, I'd just prefer you not be on this one, because of the way you had, personally, in my opinion, roughed up two people for just simply asking questions.
Yes?
I was chairman a long time ago, and a few years ago. This has always been a problem, there's always somebody not satisfied if they don't get on this committee or that committee. When you sit in that position up there, you have the responsibility of trying to hold down your committees. If you remember, when I was chairman, three years ago, whenever it was, I tried to put five on every, every committee. And I had many sitting right here tonight complaining about that. Well, I ought to be on this, and I ought to be on that. And you've been very lenient with this court for the past couple of three years. I said all along, we had way too many on the committees, costing the county a lot of money that was totally unnecessary. So instead of complaining, they'll be grateful.
Anybody gonna address the issue of the rules not being followed? Can we just do what we want to? The different rules that we passed, I mean, can we do away with them, since obviously, we're not gonna go by them?
We have a motion adjourned a second by Mr. Gully. Anyone else? All in favor, say aye. Anyone want to stay? Okay, we are adjourned.